I'd like to call this meeting, November the ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, for the Public Schools Board of Robinson County to order. Mr. Gentry, invocation, I would like, I would like to say, um, the passing of several people over the last month, but we've just learned a few minutes ago, we, we've had a Purnell Sweat, high school student, to pass. Just remember, yeah.
We've had two students from Purnell Sweat, um, several employees, parents, grandparents have passed, so, Ms. Craig's father-in-law.
Ms. Patty Mitchell's brother, Mr. Paul Hunt?
I had a brother to pass.
If you will remember those, also, Mr. Gentry. Okay? Let me cut your mic on. Okay?
Stay with me. I want to share just a little bit about what was on my heart before I came to this meeting tonight. God led me to Joshua, chapter one. And in a visit with God, God instructed Joshua that now that Moses had died, God had appointed him into the land that he was going to give to the Israelites. He was to lead the people across the Jordan River, and after crossing the Jordan River into a vast land filled with milk and honey, "I will be with you. You must be very strong and brave. You must lead these people so that they can take their land." The land that I promised their fathers, but you must be very strong and brave about obeying my commands that my servant Moses gave you. Likewise, we must be, and I'm saying this from what I believe God had laid upon my heart, very strong, very brave, as we seek God's wisdom, as we enter new territory. And we are entering new territory. We entered, we illustrated that tonight, or God illustrated that for us. We must handle our duties with care and vision that He gives us each moment to serve not only our children, but His kingdom. Pray with me. Lord God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for every opportunity that you've given to us. Father, we do know that tragedy and death still is about us everywhere. And as we come together tonight, we do remember the two Purnell students who died recently. Remember the family of Mr. Paul Hunt, Patty's brother. Remember the family of Craig's father-in-law, and many others, Lord, who are on our hearts and on our minds. And we pray that you would give each one peace. Give us all peace and understanding that we might bless you, knowing that you bless us every moment. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Adoption of the agenda?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, make a motion that on the adoption of the agenda, we remove the first two items, uh, under action items. I need to call those out, Mr. Schwartz?
No, they're on the printed agenda, but you should, you might want to call them out just for the, let everybody know.
Okay. Um, we, we removed the item for approval of District Six Board Recommendation, and we also removed the oath of office for that position.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. Craig to amend the agenda on the two action items that he called out. I've got a second by Mr. John Simmons. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Under information, I, I need a, a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So approved.
So approved.
Okay. Mr. Gentry, with that motion, Mr. Vontae, oh, Mr. Henry, with the second, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Sorry, who was the second on that?
Henry.
Okay, thank you.
I need an approval for the minutes. I've got approval of the minutes, motion by Mr. John Simmons. I've got a second by Mr. Trey Britt. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Under information, items, Ms. Jessica Sealy?
Board members, if you will join me at the podium for a special presentation. So it is our distinct honor and privilege tonight to recognize Mr. Mike Smith, the longest-serving board member with this service award. In recognition of his outstanding efforts and dedication as a member of the Public Schools of Robinson County Board of Education, the twenty-one thousand five hundred students and three thousand public schools of Robinson County employees express sincere appreciation for services rendered as a PSRC Board of Education member for thirty-three years. His continued support and dedication to educational excellence for the public schools of Robinson County students and staff has created a legacy of success and opportunity for our citizens. Unfortunately, he was not able to come tonight, but we do want to, um, um, recognize him for all that he's done. Would any, anyone like to comment?
Go ahead, man. You first?
Go ahead, I will push.
Um, I want to recognize Mr. Mike Smith for being able to smile when things were tough, but I could always tell when he was not so together. He would turn red as an apple in his face. I remember the first time that I've ever seen him sweat. Mr. Sweat was giving orders at the podium, and Mike was just sitting there just sweating away, and come to find out, it was, Mr. Sweat was giving orders about the budget, but Mike pulled it together. He has always been a man that was self-contained, he's always been a man that just kept his cool, didn't get angry, but if he turned red, he was angry. We're going to miss Mike. Mike was always, always a kind gentleman, and I hope him the best in his recovery, and I hope that he doesn't give his wife too much slack.
Maybe I can. I went to Red Springs Middle as principal back in the mid-nineties, and I had heard Mike's, heard of Mike Smith, but I didn't know him. But, uh, I met Mike there, and, uh, we developed a friendship, and, uh, me being at a school like that, he was, I guess what you'd say was a hands-off board member, because I never saw him, which was good. If I needed him, you know, he was always there. And Dr. Emmanuel touched on it. He, uh, he was a common influence on this board since I've been on it and the years before. He, he just always had a way, you know, sometimes it gets a little tense in here and in the back, but Mike had a common way that he could speak. Now, Dr. Emmanuel's right, folks, and y'all knew it, if when he turned red, he was getting a little upset. But he did have just a very common influence. But, uh, and I visited him quite a bit, and I would say anytime anyone can go see him, he knows you. And Mike can't communicate to you, but I, I really think, believe that he knows you. And I do have one more, if I could say it. It's that Red Springs Stadium, that facility. If it wasn't for Mike Smith, it wouldn't be there, and it should have been there a long time ago. But, I mean, we all had a part in it, but we all know Mike was the driving force behind it, and I'm glad we got it done.
My piece about Mike, I was, um, friends with Mike long before I became a school board member, but I want to thank him for his service, um, and the things that he brought to the board, um, and also as sharing, sharing himself with the board and being chairman of the board numerous years, okay? And, and I don't know how many years that was, um, but Mike was strong in his beliefs. We didn't always agree, um, and like Dr. Emmanuel said, he'd turn a little red, um, when he'd get fire up under him, but for, for what he's done and serving, um, his district, District Six, um, in the public schools of Robinson County, um, and I wish you well, and we're praying for you.
Now, I will say too, um, working at, working as a local news reporter, Mr. Mike didn't dodge me, he would always tell me the truth, and, uh, he would always, when he was running a meeting, you always knew what was going on, so definitely praying for you, Mr. Mike, and, um, thank you for your service. Next is Native American Heritage Month. So as you know, November's Native American Heritage Month. This is a time when we celebrate the traditions, the culture, and contributions of Native Americans to our world, and we have several events going on at the school level for that. As a reminder, tomorrow, all PSRC schools and facilities will be closed as we observe Veterans Day and honor the service and sacrifices of our military service members. At this time, we would like to recognize any veterans here. If you would, please stand and be recognized for your service. Okay? Well, let's give our veterans a round of applause. And thank you to all the veterans watching. Thank you for your many services, your many sacrifices and your service that has given America the numerous freedoms we enjoy today. Today and every day, we thank you, and we certainly don't thank you enough for all you've done. Um, also, um, I was asked to add this. I, I want to add that starting in January, we will incorporate the Pledge of Allegiance into our Board of Education meetings. At each meeting, a student or group of students will lead that effort. So we certainly look forward to that. Thank you very much.
Next would be North Carolina School of Science and Mathematics update. Come on to the podium.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and to, to the Robinson County Board of Education, to Dr. Williamson. My name is Dr. Jamie Lathan. I'm the vice chancellor of the Division of Extended Learning at the North Carolina School of Science and Math. I am so, so grateful to be here. I bring you greetings from the chancellor of the North Carolina School of Science and Math, Dr. Todd Roberts. I also bring you greetings from one of our Board of Trustees members, Dr. Ray Spain, who was supposed to be here tonight, uh, but he certainly sends his warmest regards. He's a former Warren County, North Carolina superintendent. Uh, some of you may know him. He's now serves on our Board of Trustees at NCSSM. And he and I have been sort of partners, partners in this effort, uh, in reaching out to different schools, districts across the state of North Carolina. And I'll tell you, one of the, one of our favorite places to visit has been Robinson County, without a doubt. We visited several times, and every single time I felt welcomed, included, embraced, and one thing I know for sure is that people of Warren County and the educators and Dr. Williamson and his team care deeply about the education of the students and want to do whatever it takes to see these young people, like, who are standing here beside me today, excel. And I want to provide you with some proof of that today. We're giving you a few updates. So I'm excited today to be joined by Brooklyn Jones and Julius Coward. These are two students. Before we started visiting with Dr. Williamson and the team, uh, these two students would not have probably been a part of some of the programs that we had, and these are just some of the fruit, and they're really the highlight, and they're the stars of the show tonight. I'm just going to speak a little bit and try to not be long-winded and, and allow them to come up and share, uh, their experiences in some of our summer programs that are the direct result of Dr. Spain and, and I visiting and, and really establishing such a wonderful, mutually beneficial partnership with Robinson County Public Schools. So what I'm going to do tonight is briefly kind of talk about NCSSM and sort of, and, and the Extended Learning Division, and sort of how we partner, some of the history of our relationship with Robinson County schools, which some of you probably know well, and then I'll turn it over to these two young people to talk about their experiences. So let's see. Okay, so just so you know, NC, I, I know you know the NCSSM is a residential boarding school for the best and the brightest in the state of North Carolina. Uh, last year, we were ranked number one in terms of top public school in the nation. This year, we, we took a dip, we're number two now, uh, but, but we're still, and, and that's a testament to the wonderful people of North Carolina and the, and the great students that we get a chance to serve. Now, half of our mission is to serve those students in our residential program, which is in Durham, and now we have a campus in Morganton. We also have an online program that serves about almost five hundred students, so we're reaching a lot of students. But the other half of, of our mission is to advance public education across the state through outreach. And this is where sort of I, I come in as, as the leader of this group, Extended Learning. We're the outreach arm of the school, collaborating with communities like, like yours, uh, to offer different STEM elective, STEM initiatives for teacher PD and direct services to students, math, science, computer science, and engineering. And some of the guiding principles that, uh, that drive our work are our belief that all students deserve academic excellence, our belief in engaging with communities, our belief in collaborating with like-minded, mission-driven institutions, our belief in equity, our belief in putting students first, and our belief in being good stewards of the, the resources that the state has given to us, uh, to serve the whole state of North Carolina and the young people of North Carolina. So we have a lot of programs, and I'm just going to talk to you about, uh, a few of them today, again, with highlights from the folks who have had firsthand experiences with those this summer. So just in terms of historical connections with Robinson County, I want to mention a few people who are, who are, uh, two of them are dear friends of mine and one of them, but they both, they all, three of them come from Robinson County, and I'm sure that you can probably list several folks, uh, from this county who've been through, uh, the NCSSM. Miss Stephanie Bass, she's a class of nineteen ninety-one, she grew up right here in Robinson County, she is on our Board of Trustees, and she is actually the chair, the current chair of our Board of Trustees at NCSSM. Ms. Erin Locklear, uh, awesome woman, uh, class of nineteen ninety-three, she's general counselor at RDU, she's also on our Board of Trustees, and all these people went through the School of Science and Math. And then Dr. Laurel, Laura Gerald, uh, she's also from Robinson County, she was our commencement speaker at NCSSM, uh, just in two thousand and twenty-two, she's a class of nineteen eighty-six, uh, president of the KP Reynolds Charitable Trust. That's just a few, right? You guys have many, many outstanding, uh, people who the School of Science and Math has benefited from coming through our doors and who we are proud to say are alum of our institution now, and some that are still there. So, so, uh, I don't know, about a year ago, Dr. Spain and I visited, and we looked at, if you look at this table, you can see that in our Durham residential program and in our online program, we've had significant Robinson County representation. But we also have a Connect program, which is our distance education synchronous, uh, STEM courses that we offer to students across the state of North Carolina, and that program, sadly, had not had any Robinson County students in it. So I think we visited, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Williamson, in late November or early December, maybe it was even in December, nothing there. And then immediate, and so this is a little bit more about the Connect program, again, distance education courses, uh, to schools across the state, and immediately, immediately, Dr. Williamson and his team got to work, and we, five students signed up for our courses. And you can see the courses here, they're, these are way above my, my level, but genetics and biotechnology, AP macroeconomics, forensic science, artificial intelligence, five students in probably less than a month, probably less than three weeks, signed up, just like that, for our courses, and they did well and excelled in the spring of two thousand and twenty-three. So then the challenge was, all right, so we have a whole school year now, two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, what can we do with, uh, with Robinson County students then? So here's our, uh, course catalog. So we sent this out to the leadership team, and we said, all right, let's get as many students as possible in all of these courses here. And by the way, all of you have folders, and in the folders, there's, uh, uh, a description of flyers for our Connect program and some of the summer programs that I'll talk about in more, in more detail, and Julius and Brooklyn will talk about too. But see, you see, the course is here, and that's fall, and this is spring. So we are now at about twenty-eight enrollments, uh, just from Robinson County Public Schools, and that, that is simply amazing, and that, and that might be more than any other school district in our state. Now, we serve all hundred, uh, counties, hundred and fifteen school districts, and right now, we're in about seventy, seventy-three or so counties, but this is, it happened in, you know, just like that. We have that commitment from the school district and the schools, and we're so grateful. You can see, I, I just took out the student names, but all these students are in the courses, and either in the courses now in the fall, or they're signed up for spring courses. And again, you can see, and yeah, I think that is worthy of a clap. Awesome. I mean, you can see the courses, aerospace engineering. There's no other high school in the state that's offering aerospace engineering. We offer it at School of Science and Math, and we have a, a young man taking that course, uh, from Purnell Sweat this semester. Uh, there's physics, there's anatomy and physiology, there's AP psychology, there's AP African-American Studies, tech arts, I mean, again, and multiple students, as you can see, like, student number fifteen, that student has taken three courses with us, right? Three courses, and they're multiple, and that's why we have twenty-eight enrollments, but twenty-two students. And I'm looking to see this number grow more and more. So I just wanted to give you a visual of all of the, the students that have signed up for these courses. And, and so with that, if students take multiple courses with us in our, in our program, in our Connect program, they are eligible to be an NCSSM Connect Scholar, which gives them, they could get a certificate in computer science and engineering, applied sciences, cultural studies, and this, many of, uh, the students in Robinson County are well on their way to achieving this. So now, so that's, that's one of our programs. The other, um, major program, we have a lot of, uh, programs that we do in the summer, and some, one of our summer programs that just went through its tenth year is our Step Up the STEM Program, and is a program for rising ninth and tenth grade, uh, underrepresented minority students. It's a free program where students, uh, live on our campus in Durham, or we also held one at, at the historically black university, Elizabeth City State University. And so, and they get a chance to take advantage of being on the campus, either the college campus or our NCSSM campus, learning about STEM research, doing STEM research. And so I'm just running through this, it's free, it started in two thousand and thirteen, and goals are to improve underrepresented students' competence in science and math, to nurture their enthusiasm for STEM, and to better prepare them, uh, for opportunities that they're going to have in eleventh and twelfth grade and beyond. And so here are some of the requirements, and I'm going to skip through that real quick. Uh, benefits of participating, I'm going to leave it on this, well, I'm going to go here. This is how to apply, and all of this is in your folder, so you know any young person that's a, that will be, that's a current eighth grader and will be a rising ninth grader, please, 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 send them to this site so they can apply for this program. We love, love, love having Robinson County students in our programs. Speaking of, uh, and here's the timeline, just so you know, uh, December one will be when the application portal opens, and then, uh, we will decide, the students will receive acceptance notifications by March thirteenth, and then by, the first cohort will be July fourteenth through the nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. So what are the students saying? And that's a beautiful picture up there of, of Brooklyn Jones, but she's actually here in the flesh. And so I'm going to turn it over to her to have her talk a little bit about her experiences with Step Up the STEM this summer.
Hello, my name is Brooklyn Jones. I'm a ninth grader at the Public Schools of Robinson County Early College. I attended Step Up the STEM Sept, um, summer of two thousand and twenty-three between my eighth and ninth grade year. I enjoyed the camp very much. I learned about new scientific method and organizational theories. My favorite subject is math, but I was never able to participate in extreme US camps that provide resources for the, the scientific methods as the STEM of STEM did. I was able to work with a professor from James Madison University. We tested the bacteria and how it grows on different items. One of the items that we used was spinach, and we used a certain scientific laboratory approach, and one of them that I had joined the most was the KOH test. As a young female Native American, I think it's very important to attend all the camps that I can. That's, so that's why I love for every young student to be able to have the opportunity to be able to learn different scientific ideas in the STEM fields. It's my, a dream to eventually become a veterinarian, and it's another dream to go to the North Carolina School of Science and Math. My older sis, my older sister goes there now, and she is a junior. Even though I'm from a rural county, I think it is important to participate in STEM camps that, that will help me become successful. So I want to make sure that I can attend as many camps and have as many resources as possible so I can learn as much as I can before college. I hope that every student will apply to be in the Step Up the STEM program just like I am. I, I hope to attend cohort number two, which is in the summer of two thousand and twenty-three to broaden my attributes and perspective of the side of sciences. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Brooklyn. And because she was in cohort one, I mean, she just has to fill out a little bit of paperwork, but she's invited back to cohort two, for sure, like, no question about it. So that's one of our program, and that's one of our longest-standing programs, the Step Up the STEM program. There's another program called Inspire, and this program is essentially like Step Up the STEM, just for older students, and primarily, we're talking about rising juniors. And the program is hosted on our NCSSM Morganton campus, and it connects students with mentors, gives them a research experience. It's another free, week-long program. And just, again, free, NCSSM Morganton campus, research and problem-solving experiences that students will get. The program goals are similar to Step Up the STEM, encouraging students to pursue STEM To be eligible, you have to be a current tenth grade student and must live in North Carolina. That's it. And so we, and by the way, we presented all these things when we came, when Dr. Spain and I came to visit, and I keep bringing, bringing that back up, because, again, Dr. Williamson and his team were so quick to jump on this, and, and because of that, we have, you know, Julius, who did participate in the program, um, but just, so you know, the application, uh, will But just so you know, the application will open on January 8th and will close about March 8th and then we'll make decisions soon after that. We have, and that's, that's Julius is back there. He's working on computer program or something, something he's working on. It's probably more advanced than I can explain now, but I'm going to let him explain. And Julius, again, when I talked to the program coordinator of Inspire, she was like, you gotta get Julius. He was so great. And, and I'm just excited that he's going to talk to us a little bit about his experiences with the Inspire program. Thank you, Julius.
Greetings Superintendent Dr. Williamson, all PSRC board members and everyone here present, I greet you all. My name is Julius Coward and I am a junior at Printel Sweat High School. I'm here to speak to you about the North Carolina School of Science and Math Maddox Inspire Program. I had an opportunity to attend this program at the School of Science and Math located in Worthing, North Carolina. I became interested in this camp after taking networking level one my sophomore year at the Chris Center here in Robinson County. This was a one week long residential camp that exposed me to different STEM opportunities. I had the chance to explore hands-on graphic creation through activities using 3D modeling and animation technologies. I was also able to build a 3D, 3D model in a game engine that makes the famous game Fortnite. While I attended this summer camp, it helped me learn and improve my skills like critical thinking, problem solving, creativity, innovation, and much, much more. Meeting new people and working together with them was a challenge, but it was a lot of fun. I made new friends, new friends from different parts of North Carolina. Probably the biggest challenge, it gave me a sense of responsibility of living on my own and what it would be like when I go to college. Living in a dorm room, having a roommate, even though I didn't have one when I was there, having to wake up early without my mom having to yell at me and being on time to meet our groups were just some of the life experiences I faced. As my daddy would say, it would bring me to be a better and responsible man. Of course, there were some fun activities, having outside activities like playing basketball and capturing the flag and having game nights and movie nights in the lobby were just a few fun activities. We also had different people from different programs going to talk to us. Even the team building activities like going to the ranch to play with the horses and working together with the people in my group were entertaining. It was a great experience and experience I will never forget and the experience that I would love to do again. After I graduate, I wanted to attend North Carolina Atticodra and Technical State University or North Carolina State University to study software engineering. Thank you and thank you for your time.
Wow. Thank you all so much. That's again, they're the highlight, they are the highlight. And I'm so grateful for all of you, your commitment to, to young people like Brooklyn and Julius. And we're excited at NCSSM to continue this, this growing, growing this partnership. So I don't know if there's time for questions, if you want to ask Brooklyn or Julius any questions about their experiences, but thank you so much. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Accelerated Reading AR, Dr. Carr and Dr. Deborah Dallas.
Good evening Chairman Lawson, Superintendent Williamson and Board Members. Tonight I'd like to provide a quick update on Accelerated Reader. Accelerated Reader is a computer program that has students take quizzes on books they have read independently. This program has been around for 37 years. It does not align with the science reading of reading and is not currently on the DPI approved curriculum list or on the district approved list. This program itself does not provide reading instruction. However, the district is utilizing a balanced reading instruction curriculum that supports the science of reading and it allows students to apply their knowledge to reading books, doing research, writing, listening and speaking. Throughout the curriculum, students not only have the opportunity to read books about research topics, but also independently select books based on their interests. School districts such as Bladen, Wakeville are not currently using AR in the district. For this current school year, we will continue utilizing AR for the upcoming school year as we continue to further the discussion and evaluation of the AR program within the district so that we can ensure that we're providing students the most effective and research-based strategies for reading success. Any questions?
Dr. Emanuel. Hang on a minute. Are you on?
Yes, sir. Correct me if I'm wrong, AR should not be used for grading, giving grades to students. It's just an incentive to entice kids to read. Is that correct?
Correct. It's just an incentive program.
I know some schools use it. I'm wondering, and you may want to wait another time, you may be ready. How is it filling in now with this new E program? I know the lessons are on that you have to do with the new reading program, EL program. Are teachers able to let the kids use it at all, the accelerated reading program? Is there time, I guess my question?
There really isn't time during core instruction time, based on all the components of the curriculum, to do it during a core reading block.
So do you have any schools that are presently using the AR program?
We had this year, right now we have one that has purchased it. And we had 15 last year, but that's where we are as far as at this moment with the purchases of AR.
So I guess my question would be upcoming another year, you all anticipating letting them purchase it if they, if they want to each individual school, if they so deem necessary.
For this upcoming school year, yes.
But you're not forbidding them to purchase it?
No, not for this year, no.
Not this year, the next year?
We were going to do some research to make a decision, what's the best avenue for next school year.
Wait a minute, now let me get back out. I just want to get something straight because of you did the phone calls. So my question again is, it would be up to the individual schools next year if they so want to purchase it for after school, maybe remediation or tutoring or whatever? If a child catches up for their own use, but not to interfere with the EL program?
Not to interfere, yes.
So they, they have the option to purchase it if they so choose the upcoming year in, for any ever. I guess that's what I'm trying to ask. In other words, this district hasn't forbidden schools to purchase it forever, have they?
No, we haven't.
And they don't, we don't intend to do that. Is that what you're saying?
Dr. Emanuel, that is correct. Our intent is we can't use it as a core because it doesn't align with what the state is saying. But again, for tutorial, for just reading pleasure, absolutely. We will not stop schools from purchasing that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Britt?
My question is, were teachers involved in this decision?
The continued use of AR?
Correct.
It is a school decision for each school to decide.
It's a school decision.
Yeah, we're not purchasing it.
Okay, my, here's, here's my thing. One, I'll be honest, I'm the one that want to get this added to the agenda because to the fact of I was getting calls about it and teachers already knew we're getting rid of it. And us as board members, I called various board members and there was no discussion whatsoever with us on it, which I understand policy and how it works and everything else. But now at the end of the day, if it's a kickback on our communities, we should know something about it. Not getting from teachers input, it should come from y'all. I'm just being point blank, plain and simple. That's my problem with it. I have teachers, matter of fact, it's funny the way the Lord works, and I'll just tell you. I was scrolling this morning on my news feed and proud mommy moment. On our rides to school in the mornings, I won't say the student's name, plays Monopoly Go on his iPad. This morning, he said, instead of playing my game, I like to reread my AR book last night. That was on my news feed this morning. Now you're talking about hitting me like a ton of bricks and what decisions we make. I support AR. I've been told by teachers that support it. I've even got an article here, I don't know how it all intertwines. Star reading, I don't know where that comes in at. This is October the 12th, 2023. North Carolina Department of Instruction awards star reading, the third grade alternative assessment state contract. We're talking all good about it, but now at the end of the day, transparency is the key to this thing. And there is no transparency on this because this right here wouldn't even been discussed if it wouldn't have been added to the agenda. But at the end of the day, they're coming to see us. They're not coming to see y'all. I'm just, I'm just reiterating. Do you understand what I'm saying? I say there needs to be looking into because I think there needs to be some teachers at the table. Without them, I've said it before, we don't have a school system. And I've got a line of teachers that say they want it. I just think we need to look at it. And I'm getting mixed feelings the way Dr. Emanuel asked that question and said that at the end of this year, it's not, I was told that it's done with, point blank, plain and simple, end of the meeting. My thing there again, there have been meetings that have took place and us as board members didn't even know about it. And I understand policy again, how it works, okay. But at the end of the day, they're kicking our doors down, complaining to us about it. We just want to, my simple thing is keep me in the loop. Let me know what's going on. It's a simple email. We get emails all day about different stuff here and there, stuff that really and truly, some of us just handle it. But now this here, we wouldn't have got it added to the agenda, it wouldn't have been on here.
Yes.
I understand what you're saying, but our directions really come from the State Board of Education in terms of the curriculums that we should be using as core curriculums. And Accelerated Reader is not a core curriculum. That's the first thing. So when we have those conversations in our leadership meetings, I make the assumption, and that's probably bad on my part, that principals are reading the information that we send them because clearly it spells out, it does not align with the state mandate levels. So the majority of our schools understand that and they're not trying to use Accelerated Reader again. If they want to purchase that for reading, no problem with it. It can't be used as a core curriculum as mandated by the state board. And that's what we have to follow. So.
Yeah, I got you.
But now the way I see it, if we're going to do one for all, if you know what I mean, if we're going to get rid of across the board, there you go again. If we got some schools that use it, some schools don't, we're making up that individual principal then at that point, am I right?
The decision as far as purchasing reading AR is always been the decision of the principal.
But there we go again, we've got teachers that want it. On top of that, I hope they've been considered in consideration because I was told the meeting took place and this is it, bottom line, plain and simple, we're done with it. They just want a voice in it. But now at the end of the day, I have a problem with it. If we wouldn't have got it added to this agenda, there's probably someone here that don't even know anything about it. Has there been discussion about it? But at the end of the day, if it kicks back on this community, us as board members should know about it.
Mr. Trey?
I'm going to have to, yeah, I'm going to have to reiterate some of those statements because, and this is why I said, you know, a couple of months ago that we need to be having, we need to be having ongoing curriculum, even though I'm not on the curriculum committee. We've, we've, we need to be receiving ongoing updates where we won't have to be, you know, having these conversations here. There may be some, some good rationale, but is, is, is those curriculum, are those curriculum committee meetings only reserved for the, the official type curriculum that goes to each school rather than something like AR? I guess would, would be an, an extra add on, but I'm about like Mr. Trey. Rather than just showing up, I didn't, I didn't even know that, you know, that this had been part of the conversation until tonight. So yeah, I, I think we should be on some sort of schedule and, and having curriculum committee meetings where we can have these discussions and, and everybody can be on the same page rather than just, you know, it popping up and saying, okay, well, the district's not going to support it anymore because of X, Y, Z, but then individual schools can do blah, blah, blah. So it's just, you know, keep us in the loop.
Okay, Mr. Trey?
I hadn't heard anything about AR, but I, I will make this comment. AR, and I'm not saying it's bad now. AR back in the day was a very good program. It was used by probably every school in this county or just about. Now, the part of the comment I have is I know y'all can make decisions down here about curriculum or other things. And principals might be told one thing, but that communication sometime doesn't get from here to the principal the same way. And then, well, this school's doing this or this school's doing that for whatever reason. And then we might not have been told at all. So whatever can be done in forward with AR or anything else, you know, when, I'm not saying what you give principals, we need it, I don't need it, there's things I don't, you know, that's what y'all deal with. But sometime that communication is not told to where you got one school using AR. So this school calls this school and says, we can't use it. So there's a little disconnect there in, in what's being said, not just with AR, it could be with anything. So whatever could be done with that would be helpful. And again, where situations like this, we don't get blindsided. Now like Mr. Trey's had comments, I'm not familiar with this at all. Cause maybe for whatever reason, that school's not ordering, not using it. But now I do have one question. I know you just mentioned tutoring. If a school orders it because of the curriculum we have, there's no time to use this in that curriculum. Okay. So now other than tutoring or after school, is there any time to use AR? With the way, way our schedules are now?
Unless some school has like some time during intervention, if they're doing some sort of arrangement or something like that, but not during the regular 90 minute block.
Like a remediation time that they've got with their schedule?
Yeah, or when kids arrive or some that go to the media center, they may do it during media, those types of things.
Okay. Now, this is not just this case. I mean, there, there's been cases or instances, you know, over the years and it always happens. We're just, you know, information sent out, but somebody interprets it one way or it's not even gotten to this particular point where it needs to go. And those communications, they need to be told. And then, you know, what we need to be told, just kind of let us know so we don't get blindsided too. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Gentry?
I'm thinking, and I'm, I know of Accelerator Reader. I don't know that much detail about it, but I do know that our unwritten policy, or it may be written policy, is if, if we're using any particular instructional program, that there should be some measurable data or assessment that, that comes from that. So am I right in assuming that there is a component that assesses the, the progress and the usefulness of Accelerated Reader to the overall academic betterment of the student?
So this is purely for just getting people to read. It's not meant for instructional pieces. So that is not the purpose of the program. It is literally for incentives. So it's incentive to read and then take a quiz on an AR book. So whatever child, if they select a book, they read the book, they go take the quiz. That's the intent of the program. It's just incentivize kids reading books.
So if, if I can tag what Trey said a few minutes ago, which I think is golden. You know, if, if we were able to get some type of at least sampling from our students about how they like it, how much it's, it's an encourage, how much of an encouragement it is to them to want to read because we know there, you know, there are a lot of students that, that don't like reading and don't want to read. And I'm just throwing that out there. Is there, is there some, some way that we can say, we can assess the students or get them to vocalize in some way or indicate the value of it to them personally, since, since that's its intention? Is there, is there a way that we can implement to get their feedback? Well, I guess what I'm trying to say.
Just, I mean, we could do a quick, you know, ask them personally, but otherwise, no, there's not a tool. But we could ask, you know, at a school level, individual students, how they feel about AR that are using it.
All I'm asking is to keep it as, I guess the proper word to use, maybe a supplemental material. Is that the right word to use? As a board member, I'm asking to keep it as a supplemental material, do not get rid of it completely. What, maybe that needs to be some clarity and transparency there. Some have taken it as we're getting rid of Accelerator Reader in the Pope School of Robinson County completely. I'm just telling you what I'm told as well.
Yeah, I made that statement and, and I'll make it again. Accelerated Reader is not a core curriculum that we're going to use. Supplemental fine, we've said that, but it is not a core curriculum that we're going to use.
Okay.
It never was.
Right. But the, the principal at each school with their funding can spend it on those.
On excellence, yes.
If they've got, if they don't have the money, then them's the one that won't have accelerated reading, correct?
Yes, because it's a school-based decision.
Right. Okay. All right, we're good? All right, we're good? Next on the agenda is public comment. I don't have any in front of me. We'll move on to action items. Um, our attorney, Mr. Richard Schwartz.
All right, Schwartz, there we go. Um, uh, you have in front of you a settlement offer for governmental entity claims. This is another piece of the jewel litigation, uh, that you previously approved the settlement for with respect to certain defendants. This is a, uh, another portion of that same multi-district litigation, uh, that would, uh, settle with another group of entities. The Altria Group Incorporated, Philip Morris USA Incorporated, Altria Client Services LLC, and Altria Enterprises LLC, and Altria Group Distribution Company, who are collectively referred to as the Altria defendants in this case. The public schools of Robson County would, uh, be eligible to receive a gross payment of $156,979 out of the little over 168 and a quarter, 168 and a quarter million dollar fund to resolve all claims. Um, that's a gross amount from which attorney's fees, case costs, and, uh, common expenses would be deducted. Um, payments anticipated to be made in 2024, likely in the first half of 2024, depending upon the court's schedule for approval of this. Um, if you approve this, um, you would participate in the large settlement. You do not have to approve it, you could go it, go your own, um, and continue the litigation with all the risks inherent in litigation, which could include getting nothing. Uh, if you authorize the execution of this release agreement, um, you would be part of the, uh, proposed governmental entity, uh, settlement against the Altria defendants. Uh, the recommendation from the attorneys that you have who've been handling this is to approve this, that's their very strong recommendation. Um, and to accept, accept the government entity settlement off, author, offer, excuse me, and to, um, authorize the board chair to sign both the release and the, um, explanatory letter, um, that is in your board packet. Um, and to return, uh, those documents to the attorneys handling these claims. Um, so I concur with their recommendation and would recommend your approval of this settlement. And, um, participating in, uh, this portion of the settlement of the jewel action.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this, uh, offer in this settlement.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Henry Brewer. I have a second by Mr. Vontae to proceed with the settlement terms of jewel. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Policy 9300, naming facilities, Purnell Sweat High School baseball field. Mr. Patterson?
Good evening, Chairman Lawson, Superintendent Williamson, and board members. On August the 18th, 2023, a formal writ, written request was made, submitted to Mr. Clyde Levine, principal of Purnell Sweat High School, proposing that the baseball field be named in honor, in honor of former district athletic director and Purnell Sweat baseball coach Ronnie Chavis. Based upon board policy 9300, naming facilities, the request was sent to, over to the construction of facility committee. The committee voted to move forward with Purnell Sweat High School hosting a community forum to gather input. Mr. Clyde Levine posted a date of the forum on Purnell Sweat website. He also sent out a call message to all parents and students and also ran an ad in the local newspaper five days prior to the forum. The forum was held on October the 19th, 2023, at Purnell Sweat High School's library. There were 18 people in attendance. Eight of the 18 individuals spoke highly of Ronnie Chavis and how he was well-deserving of having his name placed on the baseball field at Purnell Sweat High School. Now, according to board policy 9300, we have to feel all the necessary steps to move forward and name it of, uh, Purnell Sweat High School baseball field in honor of Ronnie Chavis. Each of you have received a copy of the proposal and all of Ronnie's accolades throughout his career as coach and as past athletic district, athletic director in your packets. So at this time, I would like to move forward with this proposal and turn it over to Chairman Lawson and the board members for a decision.
Mm-hmm, I'm trying to get you on, hang on.
Mr. Lawson, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, accept naming, uh, Purnell Sweat baseball field after Coach Ronnie Chavis.
I've got a motion by Mr. Henry, got a second by Mr. Gentry of the renaming of Purnell Sweat High School baseball field to Ronnie Chavis. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman Lawson.
I've got Mr. Bobby Locklear. CTE right-of-way easement, LR EMC.
Good evening, Chairman Lawson, Dr. Williamson, superintendent, board, board members. We're asking for your approval tonight for e, to grant EMC a right-of-way easement to provide power and electricity, electricity to our, uh, current construction site. This easement will cover both the temporary power that would be used at the construction site, also permanent power to be established there once the building gets up, uh, gets off the ground.
I've got Mr. Vontae with a motion on the easement, on the CTE right-of-way easement, LR EMC. Mr. Henry made the second, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. So.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bobby. Um, sole source, source vendors, Ms. Erica?
Good evening, Chairman Lawson, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, and board members. I included in your packet, um, Explore Learning and Learn Ed, and I put at your desk this evening, Nozella, um, and we asked for approval of those vendors tonight. I can answer any questions.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve.
Hang on.
Yeah, um.
I'm sorry.
Let me get, Mr. Trey.
Okay, um, with these three vendors and these three products, are they, are they part of the approved, um, list from DPI that?
Hang on a minute, let me take the motion first and then we're gonna have to discuss, okay? Dr. Manuel?
I make a motion that we approve these sole sources, all three of them that Ms. Erica has submitted.
Do I have a second? I've got Dr. Manuel making a motion to approve the sole source vendors. Mr. Henry with the second. Discussion?
Yeah, so are the, are all three of the products that we're, um, purchasing, are they a part of that approved list that the superintendent was talking about earlier from DPI?
So part, Learn Ed is actually books. Um, the Nozella is, Dr. Carr may be able to speak more in detail on Nozella and the science-driven for Explore Learning.
Those are supplemental resources, DPI doesn't create a list for supplemental resources.
Is AR a supplemental resource?
It is a supplemental resource.
Okay, um, are these new, are these new products or updating?
No, these are the, we've been using these for the last four years, for, at least four years for our curriculum as supplemental resources for science and social studies.
Yes, sir, I brought all three of those, um, in the previous years before the board for approval.
I would like for us to have a, you know, when, before we, because, you know, something like this is, I, I would say it's probably, um, 80% of a decision like this is probably determining whether or not it's meeting the educational need and 20% of it's financial. So we're discussing it in a, in a, in a financial context. And, um, we have had a, a, a meeting to really, um, discuss whether or not to show, you know, to show some data or, you know, to, to review, um, uh, comments and everything from teachers that whether or not this is working, want to go a different direction or whatever, um, you, you, we, we just look at things like this through a financial lens and I think we need to start doing a little bit more, um, on the, the, you know, the, the evaluation side and making, uh, determining whether or not the, these tools are actually, um, you know, working. And, um, that's all I gotta say about that.
Uh, Mr. Britt?
I got a question, it's been, I just thought of it here and there and I've actually questioned the way, like you said, this one said is books. Do, who is accountable at each school with teacher turnover and that sort of thing? Far as making, like, I guess the curriculum has the books that go along with it, if you understand what I'm saying? Do we have somebody at each school that is accountable for like, you understand what I'm saying? Being accountable for all these books, looking at it from a business aspect with the money that's being spent? Are these books being accounted for, if you understand what I'm saying, at the end of a year for teacher leaves and that sort of thing?
Mr. Lawson, can you, um, turn on Dr. Carr's mic, please?
I thought I had it on, she must have cut it off on me.
They're inventoried through media, so we have when they come in, they're inventoried and then they're checked back in through the media every year at, during the summer. So they do that in, in checking in and out every year. It's kept in the inventory so that we know how many, and then that way we can refill any if something goes missing.
All right, I have a, a motion by Dr. Emmanuel. I have a second by Mr. Henry after discussion. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Final amendments. Year 2023 or 630 2023?
Yes, sir, this is after recording the, uh, payables and receivables that were received in the new year for prior year. These are the final amendments and I can answer any questions anybody has regarding the amendments.
I've got a motion by Mr. John Simmons. I've got a second by Mr. Trey Britt on the final amendments, um, for 630 2023. Ms. Gentry?
And, and doing a quick calculation myself, and I, I, I'm assuming my calculation is correct that the, that this bounces out to zero, these additions and, uh, and, and amendments, it zero, it comes to a zero balance.
Correct, every amendment I have to provide, um, has to be balanced with our revenues and expenses, yes, sir.
Okay, you just answered my question in, in what you just said, that's, that's policy.
That's policy. It has to be a balanced budget, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Monthly financial report, Ms. Erica, sent, sir.
I can answer any questions anybody has about that. Um, we're still waiting on different line items to come in from the budget. They've been really slow this year in getting us everything we need, but hopefully within the next, uh, couple of weeks, we may be scheduling a finance committee meeting to go over the, the budget in detail and have that presented so you'll start seeing those budget amounts here.
Okay, Mr. Craig?
Sir, I have one question and I'll make a motion with the back pay and everything with teachers or whoever, whoever employees are, um, has that been handled, is all that taken care of at this time?
And I'm gonna send out an email tomorrow, um, the month of October, we updated everybody's salary. So the paychecks that they received at the end of October were at the correct rates. The retro pay we're working on this month and the retro adjustments will go out on November the 30th. Supplements will be paid prior to Thanksgiving and regular pay will go out on November the 30th.
Thank you.
When I say prior to Thanksgiving, November 22nd, exactly.
All right, Mr. Craig?
I make a motion that we accept the, uh, monthly financial report.
Okay. I have Mr. Craig making a mo, making a motion on the monthly financial report. I have Mr. Henry Brewer with a second, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed, no.
Thank you.
Closed session. Mr. Trey Britt?
I moved at the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robson County going to closed session for the purposes of discussing certified and classified personnel, North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A1 and 6, and to consult with attorney retained by the board in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robson County, North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A1 and 3, and to consider student matters with North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A1 and 115C-402 and 200 U.S. Code 1232G.
Mr. Trey Britt with the motion to go into closed session. Mr. Gentry with a second, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. We're going to closed session.
Second.
Mr. Gentry made the motion to come out of closed session.
Mr. Vontae Leach made the second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. I need a motion to approve personnel report as presented.
Mr. Gentry with the motion.
Mr. Vontae with the second. All those in favor say aye. Okay. Dr. Williamson?
Recommendation on assistance.
Yes, yes. Mr. Chairman and members, I want to recommend Mr. Jamal Campbell as the new Assistant Superintendent of HR effective January 17, and Israelam contract effective again January 17, 2023 that we run to June 30, 2025, please.
Okay, Mr. Vontae with the motion to approve Mr. Jamal Campbell as Assistant Superintendent of HR effective January 17, 2024 through June 30, 2025. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve closed session minutes on October 10, 2023. I got Mr. John Simmons with the motion to approve the closed session minutes for October 10, 2023. Mr. Henry with the second. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. No, we done it out front in action. Mr. Vontae with a motion to adjourn. Mr. Henry with the second. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. I want to say this. Thank you each and every board member for what you do for the public schools of Robinson County. Dr. Williamson and his staff and all the public schools employees. I'm thankful that you're here and you work for us and you live here with us. And I just want to thank you. This is the month of Thanksgiving. Be kind to somebody. Say a special prayer for those that need prayer. This meeting is adjourned.